Would people wait in line for a hot dog for half an hour or more?
This is a hot dog.
We can get a hot dog anywhere.
No, this is just, this is the best hot dog.
Yes, we've been coming here since we started dating. It's been what, 16 years?
Wow. So why do people wait in line for a hot dog?
Um, they have really good customer service and their hot dogs are great. And their fries are really good, too. So we bring the kids.
I like their chili hot dogs and their, and their plain ones.
So when your mom says, "Where do you want to go?", you say?
Pink's.
They're on Food Network.
It's on Food Network?
Yeah, so that's how we've seen it.
I have been coming here since the 1960s and the 1970s and it's the best hot dog in town. I love it.
Well, if there's a line, it's gonna be good.
No hot dogs, you say? You're a vegetarian? Well, that is no excuse. Pink's has regular dogs, turkey dogs, and veggie dogs.
When you go to Pink, there's a lot of Wows. And when there's Wows, people hear about it.
A lot of Wows and about 40 varieties of celebrity-themed hot dogs to choose from. Or maybe you will want to create your own Wow and come up with a new combo of hot dog toppings all your own. Happy 78th birthday, Pink's.
Now get this: To celebrate, Pink sold hot dogs for 78 cents for a total of 78 minutes, with proceeds going to charity. Well, from chili dogs to barbecue, a group of downtown property owners honor the men and women who keep their neighborhood safe while also saying goodbye to a longtime leader.
Thank you.
Lunch is on the house for some downtown heroes.
We don't run around looking for handouts or pats on the back, but when it does happen, when somebody does pat us on the back and say, "Good job, we appreciate you", it does go a long way.
This is the 19th Annual Downtown Business Improvement District Luncheon, honoring those first responders that helped make downtown Los Angeles safe. It is free to all law enforcement personnel, also emergency response.
We want to bring attention to the extraordinary work that they do.
By the time the story airs, Carol Schatz has retired as the longtime president of the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. That's a coalition of downtown property owners investing in the area's unprecedented growth and safety improvements.
And it would not have been possible without the support from LAPD, from the fire department, from the county sheriffs.
Her final public safety barbecue dedicates proceeds to the L.A. Police Memorial Foundation for Fallen Officers.
We pay for the funerals. We send the kids to college. Unfortunately, we haven't lost an officer for several years, but we still grant about a half a million dollars a year.
We want to show respect and we want to honor their service.
And honor your service, too, Carol Schatz, retiring after nearly 30 years as president. Here's to the future, yours and downtown's.
Congrats to Carol for all of her hard work. And as Gil mentioned, the barbecue raised funds for the L.A. Police Memorial Foundation. More info is available at lapmf.org. A new photography exhibit explores the defining moments and key players in the Chicano rights movement of the '60s and '70s. Rashia Goel takes us to the Autry Museum for La Raza, where art and activism come together.
The La Raza publication ran for only 10 years, but had a profound impact. The bilingual newspaper was published from 1967 to 1977 and gave a voice to the Chicano rights movement. And today, those compelling images are on display as part of the La Raza exhibit at the Autry Museum. Now retired, Jose Raso was a former co-editor of La Raza from 1968 to 1972. He gave me insight into the exhibition that features more than 200 images shot by photographers that captured the activism of the Chicano movement, which helped inform residents of political issues and how they could advocate for change. Seen here as a younger man, he says the paper was more than just a publication.
Because we had no representation in either the media, which means radio, television, or the movies. That's why we started a newspaper, to give a voice to the community and also to educate our people regarding social, political issues that existed in our community. The exhibition is educating the public about some of the various issues that keep arising. There are two or three issues that are never going to be going away in our lifetime, and that's poverty, and discrimination, and racism.
Stanford graduates Eli Risco and Ruth Robinson founded La Raza in 1967 as a platform for community organizers. It was sold by subscription, but free for those who couldn't afford it, and often found in local libraries. Raso says while we see the photographers' work, it was a collaborative effort to get the word out.
The photos over here show a number of photographers, but we had scores of other people that were involved, that were actually doing the organizing.
One of the key issues of this movement was education. Back then, young Latinos weren't given many options. For example, women were encouraged to become homemakers instead of pursuing further studies.
You can be a home economics major, learn how to cook, learn how to serve plates and so forth. And if you want to work, you can be a secretarial class. So very few of us were geared to go to college, which is an academic curriculum.
But that was just one of the issues the Latino community faced, along with lack of employment, police brutality, and others. The exhibition's short-term goal, Raso says, is exposure, but long-term is to really educate the people, which can serve as a resource for educators and students. And his personal message to all of us, especially the youth?
60,000 Hispanics turn 18 every month, every month. Now they have a responsibility to vote. If they vote, we can change the whole system in the United States.
La Raza will be on display until February of 2019 at the Autry Museum. For dates and times, visit theautry.org. Traditions of the Far East come alive in the West, as Hollywood welcomes a new neighbor that highlights the beauty of Japanese culture.
Good choice.
Think of this Japanese robot that greets you near the door as a sort of international ambassador. Japan House has been open for eight months now, bringing a far eastern touch to the Tinseltown atmosphere at Hollywood and Highland.
I've always thought that Japanese culture is kind of more inherently creative than some, like seem to go about things in a different way and come up with really beautiful, classic ways of describing things and putting things together.
Visitors can get a dose of culture immersion at the library and the salon for screenings and workshops. There's also a restaurant, a shop, and a hands-on, interactive gallery. This is a place that invites Angelinos to try all things Japanese.
We want people to experience Japan with the five senses: to see, to hear, to smell, to touch, and eat.
Japan House was created by the Japanese government, but it's received support from Councilmember Mitchell Farrell's office. So why L.A.?
Los Angeles is the city of diversity. It has the capacity to accommodate and enjoy different cultures.
According to Japan House and its president, the Japanese were among the first to start 3D printing. And look at these 3D-printed objects. This is an interactive exhibit. And when you touch the sensors, you actually get them to move. Pretty fun, right?
I think that anything that will help bring people into learning more about history is fantastic. And people love technology, they love robots. So if they can take that and then help them to learn about a culture, that's brilliant.
And while we're talking about robotics, the Japanese have an edge there, too.
Robotics is worldwide, right? But then the Japanese robotics has a long history, dating back to 400 years ago. It's a mechanized doll.
Who would have thought this mechanized doll would become the prototype for the modern-day robot? By the way, admission to Japan House is free.
L.A.'s home to one of three Japan House centers in the world, joining London and Sao Paulo. Well, Dodgers fever is running rampant this week, and we caught up with the L.A. Dodgers Foundation as they hit their goal of building 50 Dodger Dreamfields for L.A.'s young sluggers.
The L.A. Dodgers Foundation and their fundraising teammates opened their newest youth ballpark for underserved kids.
It feels like an especially exciting game day for us as we celebrate the 50th Dodger Dreamfield. Wow, congratulations.
Dodger skipper Dave Roberts cheering on the completion of the newest Dodgers Dreamfield at Algen Sutton Rec Center in South Los Angeles. As promised, 50 youth stadiums have been built over the past 15 years. In fact, the very first Dreamfield was also built at Sutton Rec Center. The charities of Dodger heroes Clayton Kershaw and Yasiel Puig pitched in to pay for the new one, a token of appreciation for hometown fans.
And we lost to this, to the kids, because the kids going to be the future for this community.
Dodgers legends Steve Garvey, Ron Say, Manny Moda, and Steve Jaeger also here, mentioning the importance of more ballparks in inner-city neighborhoods.
Giving the kids something to do, keeping them out of trouble, giving them something that they can work together and accomplish something. So it's a, it's a beautiful thing.
Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson represents the area.
Oftentimes, when you see our community on TV, it's not necessarily in a positive light. And so the fact that the people we watch every day on television, our local heroes, fought enough of us to not just show up today. They were here when we did the groundbreaking. They wrote a check, they brought their families, and they tossed balls around with us. That means a lot to us.
I think that they show very good support about the field. They show very courageous thoughts with us. Let's get the World Series this year.
The L.A. Dodgers Foundation has a new goal: to build 25 more Dreamfields by 2033. That would make 75 Dreamfields to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the Dodgers' move to Los Angeles. The mayor kicks off a new effort to help young people find good-paying manufacturing jobs. A new project will make bus stops safer and more accessible in Hollywood. And plans get underway for a new Equestrian Trail and more recreational space at Lopez Canyon. All these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti kicked off a new drive to equip young Angelinos with the tools they need to secure good, middle-class manufacturing jobs as part of a partnership between the city of L.A., manufacturing, and youth organizations. The mayor said young Angelinos from all backgrounds deserve to find their passion, discover their talents, and get good-paying jobs that put them on a path to the middle class. And that this partnership will give them the tools and training they need to put that opportunity within reach. Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and the Bureau of Street Services broke ground on a $2.5 million project that will improve safety and access to transit stops along bustling commercial corridors in Hollywood. The project will improve accessibility at 14 area bus stops and install 43 new ADA-compliant curb ramps along Sunset Boulevard, Highland Avenue, and Vine Street. The project also includes new bus stop lighting, continental high-visibility crosswalks, and new trees. The project is expected to wrap up next summer.
The reality on the ground is that we're making the 13th district safer and more accessible for pedestrians, as evidenced by this new improvement.
Equestrians and hikers will soon have a new staging area and trail at Lopez Canyon. The city of L.A. broke ground on plans to develop a portion of buffer land surrounding the Lopez Canyon Environmental Learning Center for public recreational use. Plan to be developed on land owned by the city of L.A., the Lopez Canyon Equestrian Trail and Trailhead Project provides a recreational area consisting of a staging area and a 1.5-mile two-way trail. The staging area will consist of approximately four acres of land, offering a picnic area, parking for vehicles and horse trailers, a water station for horses, as well as a bioswale, simple landscaping features to slow, collect, and infiltrate runoff from the site.
As the city of Los Angeles moves away from landfills and towards cleaner and greener solutions, projects like this will help improve the environment and the air we breathe.
Does Pac-Man, Donkey Kong, or Space Invaders bring back fond childhood memories? Well, they do for me. Union Station transported visitors back in time for the ultimate arcade rewind.
For two days only, downtown's Union Station brought back some of your favorite arcade hits from the '70s, '80s, and '90s. And you didn't need quarters to play. The games were free. David Barrio brought his daughter.
Her generation's more the one I was telling you the phone. So I'm trying to introduce her to the old-school games.
No smartphone games at Metro's Retrocade experience. Instead, it had 40 of the top button-mashing joystick-jamming hits from the golden age of gaming, with games like Mortal Kombat, Donkey Kong, and Pac-Man.
So she's getting a taste of what we grew up with.
It's great, because you've seen a lot of people here today, especially the parents, you know, people that are my age with younger kids. And they're just, they love to be able to share that joy, because, you know, I don't know how many arcades are still prevalent out there.
The folks at Metro hope events like Retrocade will score bonus points with visitors and help turn Union Station more into a destination rather than just a place to pass through in between trains.
This is a place where parents can come and hang out with their kids and share something from their childhood.
Game over, but look out for more special events at Union Station coming soon.
Union Station hosts many other special events like Retrocade, including film screenings, concerts, and art exhibits. Well, celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Autry Museum with Willie Nelson, come out for the Fall Festival at the Original Farmers Market, and head out to the L.A. Public Library for a very special celebration. All this and this week's Things to Do. To commemorate its founding in 1988 as a museum dedicated to telling the diverse stories of the American West, the Autry will hold its 30th anniversary celebration. The event honoring late museum founder Gene Autry will feature a private concert by Grammy Award-winning recording artist Willie Nelson. In addition to this special performance, festivities will include a cocktail reception, an elegant dinner, and dancing under the stars. Gene Autry will receive a very special tribute as founder of the museum. With its opening, Autry realized his dream to build a museum which would exhibit and interpret the heritage of the West and show how it influenced America and the world. The celebration takes place Saturday, October 13th at 6:00 p.m. at the Autry Museum, located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. For more, visit theautry.org/celebrate. The Original Farmers Market's oldest and most beloved celebration, Fall Festival, which was established in 1934, returns, signaling the start of the fall harvest. Fall Festival is a family-friendly, weekend jam packed with crafts, games, live music, a petting zoo, and more. Fall Festival has its roots in the earliest days of L.A.'s favorite gathering place and the agricultural history of the city itself. The festival originally launched just a few months after the market first opened. Open to the public, the weekend is full of exciting activities for guests of all ages. And to really get the kids into the spirit of the season, Mr. Jack O'Lantern's Game Zone will feature pumpkin bowling, candy corn hole, pumpkin decorating, pumpkin putting, and R.I.P. ring toss and pumpkin knock. All the fun happens October 13th through the 14th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the Original Farmers Market in L.A. Join the fun to celebrate the 25th anniversary of Central Library's grand reopening in 1993. Grab some swag, including a free commemorative enamel pin. Work on an art project or tour Central Library's special collections. View rare and unique items that the library has acquired since its founding. The fun takes place on October 13th from 11:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. at the Central Library. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
...
Okay guys, you gotta sit down. Good morning, good morning. It is Friday, October 12th. I want to welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall, to this council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Can we work with my reverb here? Okay, um, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Cricoria, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Sadio moves, Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Uh, Price moves, Ofero seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, items one through nineteen are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so on these items, why don't we put Mr. Buscaino? Item twelve?
Yes, thank you.
Hold item twelve. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
Items twenty and twenty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. You have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on twenty and twenty-one, sir.
Okay, let's continue.
That brings council to presentations. Items called special or general public comments, sir?
Okay, at this time, I'd like to, I saw him, I want to recognize Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson. So, Mr. Harris Dawson, the floor is yours.
Mr. President and members, and folks who've joined us today, I'm very proud and honored to stand before you today to recognize the City of Los Angeles's own Ms. Brenda Anderson, who recently retired after seventeen years of service to the City of Los Angeles proper. Let's give her a big round of applause. Brenda started her career in the city in October of 2001 as a project coordinator in the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. I remember Brenda before 2001, and I remember how she was discovered by people in City Hall, because we were knocking on doors together in 2001 for a certain person that eventually became the mayor of the City of Los Angeles. She took a city job and began doing the work that she'd been doing on a volunteer basis as a part of organizations like Scope and Community Coalition. She brought that work in and became an employee of the city and worked to promote participation by everyday people in city government. Folks know that we had at that time the relatively new neighborhood council system, and there was unevenness across the city. Some parts of the city took very well to it. They took to it like a fish to water. Other parts of the city, folks didn't quite know what to make of it. The rules were confusing. The process was very, very confusing. And the city hired people like Brenda to walk neighborhoods through that process. And so, partly because of her work, all over this city, wherever you go now, you find strong neighborhood councils. You find everyday people who are experienced, who know how to engage the government, who know how to engage our city departments. And we have Brenda Anderson to thank for that. And so, she's also, in addition to promoting participation in the neighborhood council system, also promoted responsibility, that we all have responsibility in our neighborhoods. There are things that the city does for us and does for our blocks, but there's also everything that we've got to do to make our city a beautiful place to live and the kind of place that we all deserve to live. And so, she joined the Community Development Department in 2013. She began to work on youth issues as well as senior issues. So you'd run into her at the Higher L.A. Youth's program, or Getting L.A. Back to Work. You also see her at the senior housing facilities all over the middle of the city. If you walk in a senior housing facility and you say you need to get something from the mayor, something from the city, people would say, "Well, call Brenda Anderson. She knows how to get it done and get us to the right people." And so, we're just very, very proud of the work that she's done. She retired from the City of Los Angeles, but she hasn't retired from service to the people of Los Angeles. And so, every time I see her, she's coming from a meeting, she's in the supermarket, coming from a community activity or a senior center. She's still on the case, still doing everything she can to make Los Angeles a great place to live. So, I want to offer to all of us and ask for a big round of applause for our own Brenda Anderson.
No, Brenda, you're gonna have to wait just a little while. When I first came here, Brenda was here. And there wasn't an event that I went to in my district or anywhere in the City of L.A. where she wasn't there. In fact, something, Brenda, I never told you, there were people that would come up to me and they say, "You know, I like that Brenda that works for you. She's at all your events." And I would say, "Yeah, thank you." I didn't tell them that she didn't. You take a compliment wherever you can get it. You are highly respected, highly motivated. And I mean, especially in the very beginning when she was with Mayor V. Regosa, she was everywhere. So we want to thank you for your service. And the one thing that's cool, you're gonna be given some time to spend with your family and your loved ones. But still, you're gonna be out there. We're gonna see you all of the time. And whenever we see you, we know that it's a good day. So we wish you well and continued success. And it was a pleasure to meet the folks that are here with you today. With that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Dawson, thank you for bringing Brenda in. You know, if she hadn't come in today, we really wouldn't know if she had retired, because she's still all over the place. And so, Brenda, thank you again. You've always been very encouraging, very supportive. When I first came in, you were just totally receptive to assisting us and making sure that we knew where the bodies were. Your legacy will continue on, as mentioned, not only neighborhood councils, but youth and citizen empowerment and involvement and engagement. So just thank you for what you do as a positive example of a real angel in our city. Congratulations. I know that retirement will not be retiring for you, and we're proud. Thank you.
Let's give her one more round of applause. You have the mic.
Well, that's not a good thing, but I'm gonna try to keep it very brief. First of all, I just want to thank Mr. President and City Council representatives for honoring me today. This does my heart good to know that my work has not been in vain. I want to thank each and every one of you for all the support you've given me. And just want to let you all know that I truly believe that Los Angeles is the best city in the world. And as a result of that, I have an obligation, a responsibility, a commitment to make sure it stays that way. So even though I'm retired, I will still be around. I will still be giving back to the community, because I am a product of CD8, and I believe in the work that you all do. I believe in our city departments and the staff. So it's part of my responsibility and my obligation not to just retire and stop giving. So if there's anything that I can do, I think everybody has my contact or my phone number. Give me a call, and if I'm available, I will be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. President and members, it gives me great pleasure to present to someone who I've lost track of the number of calls I got that says, "Marquise, give this person a certificate. Give that person a certificate. Come over here and give this person a certificate." I'm proud today to present a certificate to her. So this is from all of the members of the City Council, the mayor, and the other elected officials in the city to you on behalf of your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you for your service. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we can have, it gives me great pleasure to welcome officially to the City of Los Angeles a delegation from Sardinia. Please give them a warm welcome and a round of applause. They are first time traveling outside of their home country, and we welcome you to the John Ferraro's chambers. Colleagues, here before you, we have the Sardinian delegation, Sardinian musical group, representatives from the Sardinian Immigration Museum and Immigrant Federation here joining us this morning. As many of you know, Sardinia is an autonomous region of Italy, east of the Italian mainland peninsula and on the Mediterranean coast. And it enjoys a degree of autonomy, such as a right to carry out administrative functions and create its own laws. Sardinia is in a distinctive region of Italy due to preservation of its indigenous language and the variety of ecosystems found on the island. And before I introduce the visitors today, I'd like to acknowledge the tragedy that happened in Sardinia during the past few days. As the island, like our Florida panhandle, Sardinia was devastated by a heavy range that caused severe flooding in some depths, and our thoughts and prayers are with the people of Sardinia during this trying time. We are certain that the fortitude and determination of all Sardinians share with them to help overcome this tragedy. So today, we are being visited by several representatives of the regional government colleagues. Dr. Regina Mura, the Regional Labor Minister. She has been working continuously to redesign the structure of the labor system in the island and has succeeded increasing workers' welfare. Also joining them is Honorevole GianMario Tendas, the Regional Cultural Council and Mayor of the City of Salorusa. His work on maintaining Sardinian culture has been outstanding, especially in the preservation of Sardinian language. Dr. Luca Meriu and Dr. Mirko Vaca, both of whom work with the Cabinet. Dr. Meriu is the head of the Cabinet of the Sardinian Region, and Dr. Vaca is the Special Secretary of the Sardinian Region. They assist their council in external relations and the workings of the political apparatus and administrative structures in the region of Sardinia. We're also joined by other members of their team, Anna Manuzza, sorry, Anna, love you, and John Hattis, Project Manager of the Project Coordinator. The Sardinian musical group, the Tenores Supramonte di Ogloso, are also here with us today. The group is also formed by Sebastiano Piluso, Antonio Garpie, Giuseppe Paulis, Gaetano Bussa, and Francesco Davoli. They perform typical Sardinian pastoral songs before you, commonly known as Canto de Tenores. This type of performance was inscribed in 2008 on UNESCO's Representative List of Intangible Cultural Heritage of Humanity. And last but not least, I want to introduce some of the members of the Sardinian Immigration Museum and Immigration Federation. Dr. Pierpaolo Cicalo, President of the Sardinian Immigration Federation and Instituto Santi, and Mr. Sandro Sarai, President of the Sardinian Museum of Immigration. And we're looking forward to seeing you tonight at our Italian Heritage Celebration here at City Hall. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Herman, please be quiet. You know, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, sir.
You know, I told you the story about when I was a young man and how representatives from the Italian-American community took me under their wing and protected me. So I've always loved their music. Could you ask them to grace us with a song?
That would be special, Mr. President. If I can't, no, I'm gonna, I...
No, Joe cannot sing along.
So this is their first time performing outside of their homeland, so please, thank you, Mr. President. Want to get them in the middle?
Yeah. Grazie, yeah.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to point out that they just sang Sardinian National Anthem. So it's a great honor for us to be here today. Thank you so much to the whole City Council and to Councilmember Buscaino for hosting us here today on this very special day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Benvenuti.
Bravo. See, Joe, I got "bravo"? Bravo. Okay, Mr. Weezer will do the next number. Joined by Mr. Price and Mr. Harris Dawson is The Pips. I want to call up Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Martinez, I believe. Ms. Rodriguez. And we want to welcome, let's give a round of applause to our Controller, Ron Galperin, is with us today. Welcome. Thank you for stopping by, Ron.
And good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and public. It is a great pleasure to partner today with Controller Ron Galperin, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and Councilwoman Martinez, and the Department of Sanitation in kicking off our Women's Professional Clothing Drive during the month of October. Councilmember Martinez has a community event to attend and cannot join us today, but she sends her best, and she looks forward to supporting this wonderful event as she has in the past. This professional attire donation drive is about ensuring that girls and women who might not have the economic means, but do have the financial resources to buy a dress or a dress, are able to wear it. not have the economic means but do have the desire and the determination to live better lives are able to confidently pursue their dreams. We have drop-off centers throughout the city, including one here at City Hall at the Controller's office. There are two bin locations in my district where people can donate clothes, one in Boyle Heights and one in Igerok. And I want to thank the Controller for getting us all together here and providing the leadership and inviting our colleagues to be part of this as well. Please welcome Controller Galperin.
Welcome, Mr. Controller.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Councilmember Weezer. Also, thank you so much to Councilwoman Rodriguez and to Councilwoman Martinez, to the LA Bureau of Sanitation, and to all of you for being a part of this. We're here today because we believe in empowerment and enabling everyone to pursue their dreams and have a career that enriches their lives and enriches their families as well. The Clothing Drive that we are kicking off today is a way to shape a brighter future for women. With a spare pair of shoes that may be kicking around in your closet, you can make a difference. And if you have a loved one who's got a dress or a suit that needs a new home, then we've got a place for it. Now through October the 26th, we're pleased to partner with local nonprofits Dress for Success and Girls Today, Women Tomorrow to shape and to change lives. These organizations outfit brighter lives. Dress for Success empowers women to realize opportunity and has programs on financial literacy, civic participation, not to mention some great attire for interviews, for budding entrepreneurs, for those who are in the workplace. And Girls Today, Women Tomorrow prepares young women for academic careers and for careers in all sorts of fields, as well as mentoring, which is such an important part of it. It's not just the clothes, but it's everything that goes with it. They're doing tremendous work, and as was mentioned, there are going to be 30 bins. Actually, there are 30 bins in 23 city facilities. So we encourage everyone to bring some spare clothes. As we consider what clothes really mean, it's really what they represent. It can mean a fresh start. It can mean a job interview. It can mean getting a promotion, even a new life. It's something of our social armor, when all is said and done. It increases our confidence. A fresh blazer, a new outfit can really change how you feel. I'm going to be contributing a couple of pocket squares, because those are one of my favorite things. A perfectly creased pair of slacks can make all the difference between people thinking that you belong there and not. As a matter of fact, there are a couple of studies that show that within four to 10 seconds, you're sized up when you walk into a room by an employer, by coworkers, by customers. Those four to 10 seconds make all the difference, and we want to make sure that the women who walk in the door are able to bring their A-game. So we are encouraging everybody to bring well-kept, quality clothes and shoes, dresses, suits, jackets, heels, flats, large and small. We are looking to outfit women of every style, every shape, every gender identity and expression in clothes that make them feel comfortable and express who they are. So you can check out all the locations at lacontroller.org/clothingdrive. We've got one right outside in the Bridge area. There are a number of them that are in the locations, in city facilities, in various districts. We've mapped them all as well. And thank you so much. Great to be here, and thank you so much to the council members and to everybody here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Controller, and thank you for your hard work and leadership on this. And coming from one of the best-dressed persons in this city, it was very well said and understood. Thank you so much. And now, Councilwoman Rodriguez, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. And thank you, Controller Galperin, for helping to pull together this incredible effort. It's so important. You know, I just left this morning the mayor's state-of-the... State-of-the-address... The address on women and girls this morning. And, you know, these are just some of the additional ways that we can be effective in helping to give women the starts that they need, that they can help approach that job interview with the kind of confidence that they need to exude, because when they're dressed their best, they have the kind of confidence that will help land that opportunity and land that job. And what better place than City Hall for us to help look through our closets? There's so many incredibly well-dressed individuals, very... You know, I know Councilwoman Martinez's closet and my closet will be rummaged through this weekend to see what we can contribute. But there's a lot of opportunities for us to contribute and help make sure that we're giving women the starts that they need. And I want to thank you, Controller, for your vision to help bring this forward, to partner with us. I'm proud that I am hosting at my Pacoima City Hall office, a spot where people can also contribute and donate. And I know a number of council offices has opened up their field offices to house those opportunities for people to donate. So again, this is an incredible opportunity for us to clear our closets, make room for any newer additions that those of us who might be shopping for the fall/winter sales. But I think there's no greater cause for us to help contribute for these new opportunities for the next generation of leadership. And we can do that by just simply opening up our closets and identifying that clothing wear that will help give them the confidence that they need. So thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilwomen. And now, from the Department of Sanitation, Alex Halu.
Alex, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Good morning. On behalf of LA Sanitation, 3,500 employees, we're proud to be here today, standing with Councilmember Monica Rodriguez, Councilwoman Martinez, who wasn't able to join us, Councilman Weezer, and City Controller Galperin, supporting this great donation program. In the city of Los Angeles alone, over 300 million pounds of textile is being disposed at landfills. This is the equivalent of 15,000 trash trucks going every year to Sunshine Canyon landfill. While recycling is a very visible element of what we do at LA Sanitation, reusing is a crucial step of waste prevention and is ranked first among our tools for managing resources. LA SAN is committed to reaching the city's zero-waste goal set by this council and eliminate our dependence on urban landfilling, and the Women's Professional Clothing Drive helps us reach our environmental goals. Reusing resources is an important part of building a closed-loop economy, and providing these collected items to Dress for Success and Girls Today, Women Tomorrow helps LA Sanitation support them in their mission of empowering women while also providing tangible environmental education to city employees and strengthening our bond to our local community. The collection containers, as mentioned by our Controller Galperin, will be available on all our sanitation yards and the 23 city buildings, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alex. And this wouldn't be possible without partnering with two great organizations. They do so much for our young women, not only with this drive, but in other respects as well, as was mentioned. And first, I'd like to introduce Girls Today, Women Tomorrow, who I'm proud to say is located in Council District 14. And it was mentioned earlier by our Controller, the wonderful work they do to prepare our young women to go on and pursue their dreams. So please welcome Commissioner Cynthia Reese, who is... Who will share some words on behalf of the organization. Welcome, Commissioner.
Good morning, and I just want to say how happy I am to be here today. Many of you have seen me standing up here before in my work capacity. Today, I'm in here in my philanthropy capacity. Girls Today, Women Tomorrow was started 22 years ago by now Deputy Mayor Barbara Romero to give hope to these young Latinas in Boyle Heights. We do programming around four pillars: education, wellness, leadership, and service. We teach them to be of service. So I just want to take time to thank the leadership of City Council, the elected officials, for stepping up and helping us out and investing in the future generation. I'm also joined by Aurora, our program director, and thank you, everyone.
Now, the second organization is Dress for Success. It opened its doors on December 7th, 2009, and has since reserved nearly 5,000 women in the greater Los Angeles area. They provide services to women at all levels of the employment equation: women who are unemployed and searching, recently employed and adjusting, and gainfully employed and succeeding. They help all women, and we thank them for their great work. And now, please welcome Leslie Brillhart, Director of Dress for Success Worldwide West. Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everyone in this room who has made this professional women's clothing drive possible. We are so excited to be partnering with the City of Los Angeles. Dress for Success's ultimate mission is to empower women to achieve economic independence. So we do that by providing a network of support. We provide professional attire. We actually walk with our women through their career trajectory. We're walking through with, if they're struggling to find the job, helping them get placed. We're working with them to keep their jobs. Sometimes, that's the hardest part. And then, we're obviously working with them in financial literacy, financial education, to make sure that they are stable, that they're thriving, that they feel economically independent and are creating, you know, a legacy for their families. So this professional clothing drive is really, really important to our programming. The suit is the first step for each of the women who walk through our doors. We meet women... We're partnering with over 150 referral partners in Los Angeles, local nonprofits, to have women who have a scheduled interview or maybe just got a job to come in and receive clothing with us. We do a really special one-on-one experience with them. So this is a really big help to our programming. We really appreciate it, and I just, you know, thank you.
Mr. Weezer, I'd like to recognize Mr. Harris Dawson before you present the...
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Galperin, Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Martinez, and all of the organizations. I'm particularly inspired to see you all today. We've been going through this process in our district with an organization called Close the Deal. And we have a job fair today in Harvard Park. It's actually going on at this moment. Well, last week, what we did is we asked everybody to come to the park who needed to have clothes and training, and so many people came out to get outfitted. And the thing that was most moving, you think of clothes, and it's a small thing, sometimes you can throw it away or put it in a basket, but so many people said to us, "I'm actually afraid to go ask for a job, because I think what people see when they see me is they see an ex-con," or they see someone who's a failure. And they're like, "I feel like I put on these clothes, and I feel like I'm presenting myself as a professional, and so it lets me go places and ask for things that I would be too gun-shy to do without it." And so it's a very, very big deal. It absolutely changes people's lives, and we thank you from every part of this city.
Thank you. Well said, Mr. Weezer.
All right, Mr. Weezer, back to you.
Thank you very much. Well said, Mr. Harris Dawson. And so, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd love to present, or we'd love to present this recognition to Girls Today, Women Tomorrow for your incredible work on this project and everything else you do. Congratulations. And to Dress for Success, thank you as well for not only this, everything you do and for being here today. Congratulations on behalf of the city.
Thank you for all that you guys do. Thank you so very much. I'll recognize you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this item before you reminds us that this council does not shy away from tackling tough issues. Time and time again, we have led the way when it comes to standing up for working men and women in the city. We believe that anyone who puts in an honest day of work in the city should be able to afford to live in the city. First, this body passed an ordinance to ensure hotel workers are paid a living wage. Then, we passed an ordinance to ensure airport workers are paid a living wage. And then, this council, along with the mayor, passed an ordinance to ensure all workers in the City of Los Angeles are paid at least a higher minimum wage and are guaranteed sick days. Now, today, I ask that we, again, stand up for the working men and women who are being exploited on city property in the name of corporate profits. The shipping and logistics industry is one of fierce, cutthroat competition. Trucking and warehousing companies cut costs by misclassifying employees as independent contractors in order to avoid paying the wages and benefits required by federal, state, and city law and by cutting corners when it comes to worker safety. Now, this item before you is a recommendation to veto the Harbor Commission's approval of a permit that will continue to allow business as usual for one of the most flagrant scofflaws: California Transload Services, one of at least five subsidiaries of NFI Industries operating at our port. Federal and state agencies... Now, get this: federal and state agencies have repeatedly found that various companies and divisions of NFI to be in violation of labor, employment, and health and safety laws. Just last month, the U.S. Department of Labor found that CTS violated federal law by failing to pay a prevailing wage and refusing to provide required health and welfare benefits to employees, resulting in a $3.5 million settlement. And February of this year, a National Labor Relations Board Administrative Law judge concluded that CTS, then known as Cal cartage, violated workers' legal rights by engaging in unfair labor practices, including unlawfully interrogating employees and threatening termination. The California Labor Commissioner has issued at least 12 decisions finding workers for NFI were misclassified, resulting in over $1.4 million in damages. So colleagues, I'm sure that you've heard from many on this issue or met with representatives of NFI and have heard how they only recently acquired these companies and that the new ownership is committing to making things better. Indeed, they have inherited a mess. But if that's true, then why? Then why we have to ask ourselves, our own Office of Wage Standards, for the first time in their existence, resort to asking the Board of Public Works just last week to issue a subpoena to obtain basic payroll information needed to conduct an investigation of a reported wage theft violation? This company clearly has no respect for federal law, no respect for state law, and they certainly don't respect our local minimum wage law. So in light of the poor working conditions at this facility, it's not surprising that workers have conducted repeated labor disruptions in an attempt to affect change. Just last week, employees of the NFI companies who work at the location began their seventh strike in three years, aimed at improving working conditions there. As we know, strikes and other labor actions aimed at the NFI companies on the premises disrupt operations across our port complex, hurting the port's bottom line, drawing nationwide attention, and causing substantial reputational harm. We've heard from the port that 2.5% of all cargo that arrives through the port travels through this warehouse. So we, as a city, as a port, and landlord, have a proprietary interest in avoiding labor disruptions and ensuring the efficient movement in and out of our port. So colleagues, I ask that you support me in vetoing this revocable permit, send it back to the Harbor Commission with the request that they include some safeguards that protect against labor disruptions in any future permit. Now, this is the same condition. This is nothing new to us, for the record. This is nothing new to us. This is the same conditions we include in all leases for airlines and contractors operating at LAX, the same condition we include in our waste hauling contracts, and even the same conditions included in our commercial cannabis licenses. So to the workers who are gathered here today, fearful you may lose your jobs, don't let your employers fool you. The ball is in their court. All they have to do...
Okay, now, we gotta keep this down. No, you're disrupting. You're not helping yourself one way or the other. So, you gotta keep it down. Do not disrupt this council. Mr. Buscagino, are you about ready to wrap this up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm landing this. So, all they have to do, colleagues, all they have to do is agree to the same provisions we require of other contractors and tenants performing critical operations in and around this great city. No one in this council, I repeat, no one in this council wants anyone to lose their jobs, and we're gonna do everything in our power to make sure that doesn't happen. And that's why I introduced an amending motion requesting the, the port start looking for a new tenant in the event that negotiations with CTS break down, and that any new tenant will be required...
Let's, let's, uh, this is a last warning. Last warning.
And that any new tenant be required to retain the workers currently employed at CTS. And the motion has been circulated, and I would ask, Mr. President, that we send that to T3.
And that's where it will go.
Yes, sir. So, what we want is for you, the workers, whether side you may be on this, to be paid the wages and benefits you are legally entitled to, because you earned it, and you deserve it. So, thank you, colleagues. I ask for an eye vote moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's, on this item, please, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, that's approved. All right, let's move on. Okay, let's keep it down. Let's keep it down. Keep it down. Keep it down. No, you're disrupting this meeting. The public hea- the public hearing, the public hearing on this item has already been satisfied. So, you guys, you're gonna have to keep it down. We'll go into recess. We'll go, we're gonna go into recess for a few minutes as we clear the chambers. We're in recess. Okay. The item has already been dealt with. It has been approved. You guys need to get together with your folk and figure out what your next move is, because it's not here. This council's already sent it back. Thank you, each and every one of you for coming out. No, no, man, look, the way it is, the public comment was already satisfied through our committee process. The same rules apply to you, apply to everybody else. So, again, you can stay if you want. This item has been dealt with. No, don't disrupt, man, please. I'm just asking you. We have to, do not disrupt the proceedings. (Music) Okay, we can go back. We will. We're back in session. I'd like to call Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, I have you at item 20 and 21 in general public comment. So, if you give him two minutes, then he'll get his public comment.
Sir, I appreciate that, but I'm concerned, because there are people like Wayne Williams, who was not heard on items at the last meeting, even though he signed up.
Mr. Previn, you're on items 20 and 21. And then, public comment.
Is this the multiple item section?
You, Mr. Previn, you know it. You can tell by your time. You have two minutes.
Yeah, no, I got an email about that the other day. People are concerned about the multiple comment thing. But, fine. 21 is obviously a very important, this is a Dia de los Muertos. It's a music festival. And, you know, I think music is so wonderful, and the Dia de los Muertos is something that's absolutely worth supporting. Thank you, sir. What do you, what's the, in any case, the reason why I wanted to support it in CD7 is because I think we all remember that CD7 was where, well, in a way, it all began, sir, because you ran CD7 when Monica Rodriguez was not yet elected, and Caro Trocian and she were battling it out, and you wanted to stay out of it. So, you sat there for a full year. Now, we've heard that there are other council members who may be leaving, and we're wondering, is the same caretaker thing gonna happen?
Stay on the item, Mr. Previn.
Acceptable. CD7, CD7 has, this is about an advertising program in CD7, putting up banners. So, it's something that inures to the benefit of the community, certainly. It is a kind of an advertising about what's going on. That's what campaigns are all about. So, that's why I was referencing in CD7.
Do you, Mr. Previn, I'm not gonna warn you again. Give him his one minute for general public comment. Now, you can say what you want.
No, because you're taking my time, sir, and I'm allowed to talk about the banner program, and I object to that, first of all. But I will, because you're gonna strong-arm me, just go to the general public comment in objection. I'm upset, because the campaign finance ordinance that you're circulating, today you have a little piece that says you'll have a town hall, and show that you invited someone to the town hall by showing a little receipt, and then you'll let the media and the public attend, and the other candidates. That's not two debates in the primary, and two debates in the general. In fact, it's a wiggle room festival. And everybody over here knows it, but they're gonna get in line with Bonin and approve the six-to-one match, where Englander's gonna put three of his CD12 people in there and take over a million dollars of our money. Once you realize that the charter does say what you did last time's illegal, and you have to have a special election for CD12. And he should be shamed for leaving to go be a lobbyist like Fuentes did. That is appalling, and the people don't like that. We want service, and we want people to get elected and stay in service, and not use the power of incumbency against all of their challengers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. So, now, Mr. Herman, you have the same items 20, 21, and in general, public comment. Mr. Herman?
So, you know that, since we only had two fucking items, that installing the street banners is a matter of importance, because banners will promote how the Teamsters and I, at the Dia de los Muertos music and arts festivals, can celebrate. See? We can wave our arms with our banners. See? I made a banner specifically for Angelenos. Can you read it, Angelenos? I know I'm very small, but...
Stay on the item.
Well, I'm exhibiting my banner, sir.
No, you stay on the item, Mr. Herman.
Oh, fuck. You know, a fucking street banner program, being fucking coroner for the fucking council District 7, encouraging fucking civic participation violates my fucking civil city rights of Los Angeles, non-event, you fucking assholes. Just because I wanna show off my street banner, everybody gets upset, because it says CD1 is a fucking loser, and, and, and CD12, he's gonna quit his job on October 2018.
You're off-topic. Get on topic. No, get on, that has nothing to do with this item.
So, now that the mayor's reappointment of Rosalinda Hugo, oh, I'm sorry, Lugo, as a relations board, well, I got something to say to you, Dr. Rosalinda. I did an internet check on your background. You do meet that criteria, unfortunately, though. I'm worried about the soft porno on your website. You know, most adults enjoy soft porno, you know, like...
Get on the topic. Get on the topic, Mr. Herman.
Doesn't Victoria's Secret a part of soft porno?
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Now that we all can confirm, CD12, Mitch Englander, the biggest loser, is stepping down from $205,000 a job, and that's a thankful thing for us Americans to know. Why? Because we got rid of one tyrant, and we're expected to see others follow in that flow. No more mojos rising in my house, because it seems that I, with my medication, has helped Englander step out of his kind. So, as long as we got a tyrant, belligerent jackass like Englander who's leaving, we can all celebrate with banners like this. CD12, the biggest loser. And I have a strong feeling that Mr. Dawson wants to resign, too. Is there a fallout in council?
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Your time's expired. So, if we could have Mr. Spindler. Mr. Herman, please sit down and give way to Mr. Spindler. Items 20 and 21, and then, general public comment.
So, we start off today with one of these worthless employee relations boards. Well, your employer relations suck like fucking shit, the way you treat unions. You treat unions like a whore. And that's not right. You're a bunch of goddamn employee relation jackasses. You got no employer relations, you're goddamn jackasses, the way you treat union members. You don't treat the Teamsters right. You don't treat the SCIU right. So, how's this fucking Dr. Rosalina fucking Lugo gonna solve the goddamn problem? Does she drive a truck? Does she do any goddamn work? No, just another paper cunt in the motherfucking cunt employee relations board. And I'm tired of this shit. I don't want no doctors. I want truck drivers from the Teamsters put on this goddamn board. You fucking stop fucking with the Teamsters. Then, we get CD7, the big moo. Who's got a bigger belly these days, Monica Rodriguez or that cunt Corret?
You're off-topic. You're off-topic. Give him his general public comment minute.
The Dia de, so you're gonna cut me off?
No, Mr. Spindler, you know the rules. Stay on the item.
You're gonna cut me off, you fucking midget. You're gonna cut me off. You got cut off. You lost your Jew Republican. You lost your fucking anchor baby, Mitchell Englander, that fucking bitch. You lost your mean Jew bitch. That was your legitimate angle into politics. You lost your fucking henchman. Now, Marquis Harris Dawson's the next one's gonna resign. And what you gonna be left with? You're gonna be left with double grand jury Nury? You're gonna be left with Uncle Bob over there with his wife stealing from the fucking, all the museums? You're gonna be left with fat-belly cow Monica? Who's gonna be your heavy? Who's gonna be your heavy? You need me to be your goddamn heavy. So, you know what? Get rid of my TRO. We'll sit down and talk with me, my uncle, and the fucking Teamsters, and we'll come into City Hall. Otherwise, have a good weekend.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Now, take your seat. All right, do we have James, Mr. Herman? James Crawley? James? Is there James? No James? Now, let me get the general public comment. Before we do that, Madam Clerk, let's vote on items 20 and 21. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, I want to call Jill Stewart, Carolina Goodman, Wayne Williams. Please come forward.
Mr. President, there's a request to have item 12 go forth with, sir.
Without objection. Okay. Ms. Stewart, please come forward.
Thank you. My name's Jill Stewart, Director of the Coalition to Preserve LA. I live in Woodland Hills. And we're urging you today to pass Councilmember Bonin's amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for matching funds in campaigns for city council candidates. And here's the number we're asking for, to lower it to $11,500. The reason for this is, Los Angeles has by far the highest threshold of any city in the country. New York's is 5,000. This number, not by any, any means that you guys meant, but the 22,000 they have to raise now for candidates, is clearly keeping out women. Over the years, it has kept women out more and more. And there's no bigger time than now for the city council to show that we need the women back in voices in Los Angeles, especially in city council. Nothing against you guys who dominate the city council right now, but I think you all agree, we need the women back in city council positions, and this incredibly high threshold is keeping them out.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Carolina Goodman from Council District 4, and I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters, asking you, please, to support Councilmember Bonin's motion to reduce the aggregate threshold to 11,500, and similarly for all citywide offices. Last year, a study of the 10 most populous cities found that Los Angeles had the worst representation of women on city councils. The high threshold for matching funds would deter women who underestimate their qualifications and overestimate the barriers for running office, for running for office. Councilmember Bonin's motion to reduce the threshold would help women believe they could raise enough money to qualify for matching funds. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Then I want Rob, I saw you earlier, Sylvia Moore, and Maylene Carberry. Yes, sir.
My name is Wayne Williams. I'm a board member of the California Clean Money Campaign and proudly represented by Councilmember Corretts. We need to strengthen matching funds now more than ever. Thank you, President Wesson, for moving this package forward, but it is critical to accept the Bonin-Coretts Amendment, so it is not harder to qualify than current law. The Clean Money Campaign is just finishing up a study, which we are about to release, showing that without the Bonin-Coretts Amendment, the package will have a devastating impact on who could qualify. By our calculations, it would cut nearly half the number of council candidates that would have qualified from the 2013 to 2017 time period, and under existing rules, forty-seven would have qualified, but with the package before council, without the Bonin Amendment, only twenty-four would have qualified. With the Bonin-Coretts Amendment, fifty-one would have qualified. We also show, wouldn't cost any more than the original package, that ethics passed, so thank you, and let's have it happen.
Let's have Rob, and again, the other people that I called, please come forward. Yes, Mr. Quine?
I'd like to speak in support of the motion introduced by Councilmembers Bonin, Corretts, and Rue last week, which would ensure that we don't inadvertently raise the barriers to entry for new candidates. This motion addresses some of the most fundamental principles when it comes to representative government. Without it, we would see fewer and fewer candidates qualifying for the program. In the convention debates, James Madison warned that, quote, "A republic may be converted into an aristocracy or oligarchy as well by limiting the number capable of being elected as the number authorized to elect." The purposes listed in our charter for this program state that we need to reduce the excessive fundraising advantage of incumbents and encourage competition for office, promote public discussion of important issues. By excluding serious candidates, you're silencing voices. You are limiting the diversity of issues discussed and the depth of their exploration. I urge you all to support this amendment. This council recently stated that equity has to be a central part of every conversation if we're gonna turn the city around. This is that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have Jane Bloom, Carrie Kaiser, Eliana Wachtel? Yes, identify yourself.
Okay, Sylvia's not here, so I'm Maylene Carberry with Unrig LA and Paul Corretts's district. I'm here to represent women, women, and more women. I would love to see more women on city council, and as was pointed out before, there's a study that shows that out of the ten major cities, ours is the worst for representing women. There was a study commissioned by the city at Mount St. Mary that found that female candidates, when they run for elections in LA, they win, but over the last three cycles, eighty percent of the candidates have been men. So I feel like how we're gonna handle this is by making campaigns more financially feasible by lowering the aggregate twenty-five thousand dollars of campaign funds that you have to meet. We're gonna lower it to eleven thousand five hundred, and that would make it more possible for more women and more grassroots candidates to run for office. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, if I could get Mickey Jackson and Jacqueline Richardson? Yes, identify yourself.
I'm Carrie Kaiser, I live in CD four. I'm coming here today, here today to strongly support lowering that qualifying threshold to the eleven thousand five hundred mark. This requires the same minimum number of contributors required under current law, and all citywide offices should be adjusted similarly. The current high threshold deters new candidates, when we should be encouraging more people, women being one of those groups in particular to run for office. Multi-decade study found that all five state legislatures with public financing have a higher representation of women than the national average. Research has shown that women are gender-blind in the way they donate to candidates, while men almost always exclusively donate to other men. And the study that was referenced in the last public comment about the ten most populous cities, finding LA to be the worst in representation of women in local offices, every other city in that study had at least two times the female representation, and we need to do better than that, so supporting this new threshold would be a crucial step.
Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself.
Hi, Alana Wachtel, Coalition to Preserve LA, and I'm asking that you pass the Bonin Amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for city candidates to eleven thousand five hundred, and this will really help create, remove the barriers to entry, so that lower-income women and those with no or low name ID can have access to fundraising to compete with those inside the system. We have seen what Citizens United has done to our electoral process nationally in this country. We need to be a model here and must lower that threshold. We are two times higher than other municipalities, and we must create voter-centered, not donor-centered elections. Make this city a model and create some democratic process in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm looking for Jane Bloom, Eric Hope, Mark Jurisick. Yes, Ms. Jackson?
Mickey Jackson, I am Gil Sidiyo's constituent, you can all feel sorry for him. He's good sport about it, though. I, too, want to urge us to lower this threshold. It is not only very bad for women, it is very bad for people of color. It is pretty much bad for anybody but white men, no offense, because everyone else has a harder time raising money, that study after study has shown that. And we need a lot of representation from women, we need a lot of representation from people of color. Our city is very diverse, that is our strength, and our strength should show up on this body, and it's not certainly in women and not enough in different racial groups and ethnicities. So I hope, we encourage that, and I urge you to vote yes.
Yes?
Good morning, my name is Eric Hope. Good morning, Mr. President, good morning on city council. I just want to stand here and be a voice for those people that didn't get a chance to speak today. I'm a forklift driver for California Cal Carriage, and we want our lease. I have a signed petition by most of those people that were standing behind me this morning. We want our jobs. We wanna stay there. And, Mr. Buscain, please reconsider. We need this. I'm a product of downtown Skid Row. I'm a product of society today. I pay my bills, I pay my taxes, and if I lose this, I don't know what I'm gonna do next. And I'm speaking for all those people that aren't here today, right now. They're outside yelling right now. But, we need this. We've been here, we do very good work, and we're proud of our...
Thank you. Do you wanna hand that to one of the sergeants, if you'd get his petition? Okay, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Mark Jurisick, ILWU Local thirteen. Since we didn't have public comment, I'm gonna skip what I said before. It's all on record on the previous comments I made, but I am gonna say this. We are vehemently against any disruption in the flow of cargo going through that facility. Our stance is clear, this will have a negative impact on us, and we're not really happy to hear that there's other companies lined up, because with all due respect, the city of Los Angeles bureaucracy doesn't move fast. If we're gonna change companies, we're gonna have lag time that's gonna negatively impact us, and we are not in support of any action by this board that's gonna close that facility down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for Ms. Rue... What is your name? Did I call you? I'm looking for Ms. Richardson. I called Jacqueline Richardson. Jacqueline, come on.
Mark Mendoza?
Sir, I don't have a card on you, you have to punch your name in, or you won't be called. Yes, ma'am?
Please don't try to handle the city's finances yourself. For one thing, you don't have the time, you just do not have the time, and then you don't have the expertise. There are criminals in almost every organization you can name, like criminals in churches, banks, governments, whatever you can think of that got criminals in it. Please find an institution that has been fair across the board for years, since inception, that can handle that for you. Have special contracts so that you don't have any holographs who move real quick, no holographs, to handle your accounts. And also, they're good with people, little people as well as big people, to handle your accounts. Please don't do that yourself. There are institutions that have nets that can handle that better than you, but you have to look carefully to make sure they have few or no criminals in it and give you special consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza, and thank you for... We'd like to keep a record, so thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is Mark Mendoza, I'm the president of the ILWU Local thirteen down in Southern California. Now, I'm not the most articulate person up here, and I do not quite understand how you work here. And of all people, for me to come up here and be in support of Cal Carriage, which we've been making this claim for years, but time goes by and wounds heal. I'm here for these people. I don't wanna see them lose their job. So it's a huge, it's gonna be a huge impact to the port. Two thousand containers a day, six percent of the cargo that comes in LA goes through there. Now, we're gonna have issues on the dock. The waterfront's gonna back up, and here we're gonna have these issues again. Why are you slowing down? Why is the cargo not flowing through the docks? Now, what the port had done, the port commissioners, it was a good thing. If we're gonna sit there and talk, we wanna be at the table.
Thank you. Thank you. So is Ms. Bloom, did she already speak? Well, let me get John?
Hi, John Satius. Mr. Buscain, you probably know my family, and I just wanna say that my family, UTLA family for many years, we're also ILWU. My brother Jim has passed, first generation ILWU, and I'm first generation ILWU. And I want the city council to know that we stand with California Carriage, that lease is important. And my president was trying to say, he got cut off a few seconds short, if you pull this lease, you are gonna negatively impact cargo flow into that harbor. Now, we're gonna do what we need to do on our end, and we need to get at that table, and we need to talk, and I just wanted to say, I got nineteen seconds left, and I'll cut it short, just, you know, I support the ILWU, I am the ILWU, and the Satius family is for the California Carriage keeping that lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. All right, Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members? I don't see any announcements. Well, no, Mr. Buscain. Mr. Buscain, your announcement?
Thank you. It's with heavy heart that we announce the departure of my planning deputy, Mr. President and colleagues, Nathan Holmes, who is not going far, going to the CAO's office, and will be working on CD fifteen projects, so...
Well, good luck to you.
We're gonna have a satellite office at the CAO's office. But Nate, thank you so much for your years of dedication to the CD fifteen family and the residents. You have worked alongside Allison Becker, my director, and we're gonna truly miss you, and your dedication and commitment to our city will continue across the way, and thanks again for all that you've done for us. We're gonna miss you, we love you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Englander?
Yeah, I have an announcement. Colleagues? I'm sorry, no, I made that yesterday. We're good. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? If not, if we could all rise, if we could all rise, all rise for adjourning motions, and I will look to Mr. Englander's side. I don't see any adjourning motions on my left. I'm now looking to my right, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of a very courageous woman, Stefania Brusminski, known to many as Steffi and others as Fusha, died of natural causes on September twenty-ninth of this year. She was ninety-seven years old. She was born Stefania Podgorzka in Lipa, Poland, on June second, nineteen twenty-one. She later moved to Tel Aviv, and to Boston, and eventually to Los Angeles. During World War II, Stefania and her younger sister Helena hid thirteen Jews in an attic for two years, rescuing them from certain death by the Nazis. Hiding the thirteen in her attic, Fusha knew the penalty...
Stop, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Spindler, obviously you wanna be removed from council, and you're gonna get, your wish will be granted. Please remove him right now. This is, you just, that's such a disrespectful thing to do. We let you speak, we listen to your lunacy, and you won't let us adjourning people who live good lives by interrupting the speaker. So sergeants, please get him out of here without delay. No, no, just leave. You've been removed for again disrupting this meeting. Mr. Herman? Sergeants, please talk to Mr. Herman to determine if he wants to stay or if he'd like to leave as well, because during this point in time, we are asking for silence as we recognize individuals. And, Mr. Corretts, I'm sorry for the disruption, and a disruption it was, but we're back to you.
Thank you. So hiding these thirteen individuals in her attic, Fusha knew the penalty for helping Jews. She saw a neighbor family shot dead for hiding Jews. Even after the Germans commandeered her apartment, forcing her to allow two German nurses to stay there as well, she managed to continue to hide and save all thirteen. A true Holocaust heroine, Fusha said she did not consider herself a hero, she only did what she felt she had to do because the Nazis were doing terrible things to people. Her determination to do the right thing gave thirteen people the opportunity to have many wonderful children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. One of the rescued, Yosef Brusminski, married Fusha, saying she gave me my life, I owe her mine. Together, they enjoyed fifty-nine years of marriage until Joe's death in two thousand and three. Fusha's selflessness came with a high price. For the remainder of her life, she struggled with ever-increasing post-traumatic stress, reliving the war in her mind almost daily, and eventually developing severe dementia. However, before that time, she was asked to speak at the opening dedication ceremony of the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum in Washington, DC, where the photos of Fusha and her sister Helena are on permanent display in the rescuers' section of the museum. In addition, she was honored by Women's Day USA here in Los Angeles. She was the subject of a TV movie titled Hidden in Silence, was a featured guest on Oprah, and currently a museum is under construction in the house where she rescued her thirteen people, and also an upcoming novel based on her experiences being written for the young adult market by Scholastic Press. Her spirit of helping people didn't end in World War II. As an example, there was an apartment building fire near their home in Boston, which left dozens of people without a place to stay, and Steffi and Joe welcomed nine strangers into their home for several weeks. Stefania Podgorzka Brusminski is survived by her two children, Christina Diamant and Ed Brusminski. Fusha was an inspiration to many and a testament to the truth that one young woman can silently make a declaration that something is wrong and single-handedly oppose an entire evil regime to change the world. Services are being held tomorrow, October thirteenth, at ten AM at Forest Lawn Cemetery in Hollywood Hills. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, this meeting's adjourned.